Fantastic.
So.
Um, is there any recommendation as to what we need to do to officially note it? I mean, it says.
No, he didn't say anything else. As long as it's in our records and we'll put it in our minutes.
Okay.
That that is taken care of in that we will be waiting for Ms. Saradine to.
Okay.
Move forward.
I'll leave this in the town's minutes.
And yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, that closes that one. So there's still the outstanding issue with Ms. Saradine's.
Correct.
But that that sounds like because of this, that's going to be between her and.
I was under the impression that the she has to go in front of the town now to get permission for the driveway, where that driveway is going to be.
We have all that. The town has all that mapped out. It's written on paper. It's ready to go. But the town can't give her a driveway permit on your land, on the school's land without reason.
Okay. I'll talk to the attorney about that. Your committee reports are all the different committees that that we had. Those reports are in your in your packet, the Strategic Plan Committee, the Facilities Committee, and the Reopening Committee are in the packet. I did, there was a misprint on your on your memo on the next one where it says continuing business. The reopening committee scheduled for Monday, September 20th, not the 22nd. It went out as the 20th, but it was printed here as the 22nd.
The 22nd.
There is no money, meeting on the 22nd. It's on the 20th.
School board meeting.
School board meeting. That's probably why we do that up. And the delegates' assembly is coming up. It's going to be strange to have it in October instead of January, but probably better. And if, again, the resolutions are in there, read through them. The New Hampshire School Boards Association does give their their view on the resolutions. So if you have any questions, you can read their input and justification as to how they voted on those.
I read through them all and agree with their recommendations. So I'll go with that unless anybody else has a different opinion.
Okay. And let's see. The Strategic Plan is, committee is meeting tomorrow, as a matter of fact. So we'll be starting that meeting at 4:30. And I did give you some information, further information on the Budget Committee. And in your blue folder, you have more information.
We have.
On what that looks like.
Okay. All right.
That's it.
Principal's report. Mark?
Thank you. Before I started, just when I'm getting messages, it tells us that the audio is now out as well. So I believe Sharon's recording it, so. So, you know, kudos to our staff and students for the start of a new year and a pretty smooth start as well. You know, we're moving on with the year and we know that. And the students and staff are pretty well in tune with, you know, what's going on in the world and they just cope the best they can and so do we at the school, make adjustments as needed. Some things you might know, we have 272 kids, which is roughly where we ended last year, 96 at the high school, 63 at the middle school, and 113 at the elementary school and our elementary. They're starting their MAP testing, trying to get that baseline so we can go ahead and put together schedules for students who need extra services and things like that. We're continuing with our Demonstrative Success Partnership to look at data and to use that to help instruct our students. And they're, again, they're just building some some schedules for for these kids. It's kind of funky, but, you know, kids manage, they cope. And, yeah, so in the middle high school, the math program is up and running. We picked that up at the end of last year. They had some training on it and they are starting to use it in both the textbook version and the online versions, which can be assigned through their Google classrooms. But so far, so good. Moving on with that. The science program, I'm not sure if you recall, but that was delivered and they're sorting through all those things and it's going to be up and running for the middle of school as well. They've had some training with Sabas and Sabas is the partner or the parent company. And for the life of me, I cannot remember. Sorry about that. I tried looking it up and I was like, I just can't remember. Could have ran to the room and grabbed a textbook, but again, sorry. So they're prepping to use that for the middle school. They're very excited because it's a truly hands-on, interactive approach with lots of materials for research and so forth. So we're excited. What you need to know about the high school is that we're offering eight dual enrollment courses that includes AP courses and things that run in conjunction with that would be like with the Lakes Region, those would be your Running Start courses. And I don't have all of them listed here, but I think that number is up. We added a couple of Running Start courses from last year. We have many new students and with many new students comes comes needs. We have quite a few new students that are entering our school on an individual educational plan or needing ESOL services, which is English as a secondary language. So we're working around that. We're testing those kids to see what the severity of those language barriers are and we're moving forward with that. One of the things we're doing is open house, September 15th, and we're looking forward to having people in the buildings visiting. It's going on from four o'clock to 6:00 PM and 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. We have a couple of things going on there that we know, but we're going to kind of go back to what happened a couple of years ago. We're going to, we have some like static displays from services in the in the local communities, EMS services, social emotional services, things like that. We also have presentations going on by Mr. Aldrich to instruct teachers on our new, I'm sorry, parents on our new ALMA system, which is a system that we use for grades, for communications, you know, any kind of information system that we have. So he'll be there, open, you know, walking parents through there if they're having difficulties. The other piece is that our Strategic Planning Committee will be there as well. You know that we had a couple of instances where we were trying to gather information from the from the community. And so we're going to continue those little efforts, but we're also going to put together some displays and show them a little more interactive displays and kind of show them what we've been doing thus far and some some input again as to what they can do for us, the community members, that is. And lastly, I just want to, you know, stress to parents and students that, you know, our parking lot is, we're not used to driving in there when it's that congested and we need to be careful. It's 10 miles an hour. I have kids walking around that are not familiar with the parking lot, even even older kids, again, new people from foreign countries that aren't familiar with the flow and we're trying to instruct them. We're putting people out there as best we can to kind of help manage traffic. The police have been wonderful in the morning and I want to thank them a lot, but just be cautious in there, be patient. You know, I don't need somebody hurt. I tend to yell when people get hurt, when they're little kids. So I don't want to do that. But yeah, just be patient at the parking lot. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Mark.
And I just want to add to that is that the courses scheduled, they're still in the high school, they're still settling down. There are kids moving from one course to another. So you will be getting a high school schedule at the next meeting, which is usually, when we usually do it is the end of September, beginning of October, of the numbers of where, how many are in each class?
I had one question, Mark. Can you just explain for folks what the what the Demonstrative Success Partnership is and what we're doing with them?
Yeah. So they had offered, well, they offer services to local schools for teachers to kind of look at local data, meaning like how kids read, fluency, things like that. Either math, you can work on math, you can do it science as well. We can look at certain specific strands. I think what we're really concentrating right now on is is the English language interpretation. So we can look at either local data, which is stuff that we come up with, or we can look at standardized local data, which is NWEA or MAP testing, or we could look at state testing, which is not necessarily considered local data, local source. And we can, we can extrapolate information from there and use that to target our interventions. So they're really, really trying to help us dig deeper into the data that we have so we can reach these students who a lot of, you might have heard me call it before, like cusp students who are just about there and kind of turning the page on on how they're reading or what they're learning for math. But but that's kind of what they're doing. They're just training us and getting that more ingrained in our in our school system to say, you know what, we're not just going to give them a curriculum. We're going to, we're going to look at, okay, what are those individual needs based on, based on some standardized scores, some some local assessments, and let's kind of really target, do rich curriculum activities for these kids. That's, that's what they're trying to do with us.
Is that happening administrative level or faculty staff level?
That's happening right now in the in the elementary school. And so what they're doing is they're meeting with grade levels and and services, I believe. So it'd be grade level plus like like special education and so forth. And then, and then I know Ginny, our assistant principal, is sitting in on those sessions as well. So, and then there's, there's that expectation at staff meetings that they talk about what's going on with that as well. So it keeps coming back and so they know that we're going to, we're going to use it and we're going to keep using it because it's important.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify one thing?
Sure.
Add on to what Mark's saying is that, you know, when they do the the assessments and they get the scores, the scores read where the, or display where each individual student is. It doesn't take a group and say, okay, this is Group A and they're all going to start at Level Three. You know, it takes each individual student and each individual student. No, it signifies where each student is and then that's where you start your programming with the students. It's individualized.
Targeting for where the students are at that particular time.
Correct.
Does anyone have any other questions, Mark?
I have one question. Just thought, talking about new students, you know, assuming maybe the bulk is in kindergarten, like is there a percentage for elementary to?
They're scattered. They're all over the place. Yeah, I don't have that specific numbers. I just know that I've seen a lot of new faces everywhere I go. So I don't have those exact figures.
Thank you, Mark. Committee reports. I know we have some minutes in the in the packet from Strategic Plan Committee as well as the Reopening Committee, but I don't think that's until last.
Well, you usually have a policy committee today. However, we just went, did a workshop today on all the new policies that were, that are going to be coming out and they should be coming out tomorrow by the end of this week. And so we'll gather all of those policies for the committee and then, like we usually do, and get them in a packet. And then we're going to move forward with backing up and going into our other, you know, policies. But we wanted to get the packet that was going to be starting, you know, from the legislature. We wanted to get that done. Look at that. You'll get notes with that on the next one.
Okay. So it's going to be another one of those sort of milling through the new, the new legislation to try to figure out what.
Yes.
It's an annual.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Staff nominations, recommendations, resignations?
I'm all set.
Set. Nothing on new business, town Lincoln does everything. I think we've covered that. Strategic Plan.
The Strategic Plan, the goal is, again, we had, just as a reminder, we had, originally the goal was to have everything completed by August, the end of August, and we're not there yet. So we stretched it out to October and we're feeling comfortable, still feeling comfortable about that goal. So again, we're meeting tomorrow night and we have a few meetings. There's going to be a lot, quite a few of the committee members at the open house, see if they can get some more input from parents and and feedback from them. So we'll have that ready for anyone who wants to do that. And then, you know, we'll move forward from there.
And I put in a plug at the, I participated in a meeting, school related at the, with Stock Town Hall last night, and I put in a plug for community participation.
Oh, good.
As well. So I, so I think folks know at this point, but that's going to be available for, to speak with folks at the open house.
That's great.
Great. And S. Republicans?
Nothing new there. I think we gave you an update at the last meeting about just the areas that we're proposing to spend the money, just going through all the steps with the Department of Ed, met with them, and just filling out the required paperwork so we can move forward.
Thanks. And Advisory Budget Committee. So this one is, topic has been on the continuing business for a while. We have a, we have a full board here tonight. And so I think it maybe makes sense to take that up. There is some additional information in the packet that I began about, you know, what sort of a Advisory Budget Committee would look like or what they would have, sort of powers that they would have. But do you want to speak on that issue?
I think never.
Well, I think the point is that as an advisory committee, the but, the school board sets the terms, you know, in its entirety. So how, how many meetings they would have, I suppose, if that was, although I would expect that that would be a decision of the folks on the committee, but things like how many people.
So we would decide how many people are.
On this, it says, as far as the district attorney recommends, it's up to the number of school board members, so up to seven.
Well, it says a step forth in RSA 3218, so you have to go with what the RSA says. Isn't there, this, it differs.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's no numbers in the RSA.
Right.
What, the school board appoints the members and the number of members on the committee is up to the school board.
Oh, sorry.
Not to up to the number.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have to start deciding on how many members?
No, I mean, I think the first step is, is this something that we're even interested in pursuing? So, you know, I think that that's sort of the first part of the discussion. And so that's to open up the discussion about whether or not this is even something that we want to pursue.
It was on the agenda in the spring and we talked about it and decided that we would wait to vote.
Yeah, and I think there was, a couple of other issues where, there was a meeting where folks weren't here.
Right.
Wanted to have a full board to make a decision on that issue, so.
I was an advocate for this. And biggest reason is how close the vote was in March. Now, we had an elected budget committee and the voters chose to no longer have an elected budget committee, but it was really, by four votes, I think, four or seven votes, it was very, very close. I think a good option would be to have an appointed budget committee. They don't have statutory responsibilities that an elected budget committee has. However, they can still help and advise and and give us advice with the budget and be another set of eyes and another set of ears. Still, the school board's budget that goes to the voters. It wouldn't be a battle. I don't, I don't want to use that word either. It was, I mean, the words I want to use aren't appropriate for a public meeting, so I won't use them. However, it wouldn't be like it was.
Well, they can still present at the annual meeting.
No.
Well, that's what it says.
They are solely here to advise. That's up to us. That's up to the school board. An advisory budget committee would be here solely to look over the budget, do some due diligence, and advise the school board on their budget. And if the school board decided that we want this advisory budget committee to speak at the annual meeting, then great. If we said no, thank you, MC, then.
So this, these are not the terms we're necessarily voting on.
No. Just kind of like guidelines.
Yeah. Options.
I just have a question about how we would get those people, like find that, find that group.
I think we would, I assume we would ask for letters of interest.
Right. We've had problems filling that group before, so. I, I'm not against it in any way. I'm just.
There was write-in votes or something. Why can't I write in?
There were write-in votes and some, some very good candidates, I think.
I think it would help for the board to give direction and come up, come up with a clear set of guidelines for that. We're reading this, through this now about, you know, three to four times. Really set some terms for that, for that group to say, hey, this is the advisory budget committee. We set this to meet monthly, starting in X month, and with a goal at, on this date, present the budget to the school board. Just giving them some parameters because if we just throw the idea out there of advisory budget committee, the immediate question is, okay, what does that involve?
Absolutely.
If we don't have those guidelines and set out clearly marked, it's going to be hard to.
Absolutely.
Get people on board.
I agree absolutely. If we decide to, if we vote on having an advisory budget committee, I think that's a must. Absolutely.
So we still have a representative from the school board beyond that?
Oh, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
I've spoken about my view of the budget before, when the budget committee, when the official budget committee was a thing and during those, during those meetings. And honestly, I'm still hesitant based on my experience being on the board for the past four and a half years. It's never been an extremely positive experience working with the budget committee. So I just, guess I just have that sort of trauma there where we sort of addressed an issue that had been going on for years and years. So I hesitate to jump back in. I understand it's different now, you know? There's different aspects that make it appealing, but.
My thought is that, I don't think it serves any particular interest. I think that the folks that voted against the budget committee voted against it because, you know, it was, it became a real source of stress and a real source of strike in the community for several months when we, when we were dealing with that. And a lot of people were really nervous about whether or not our school was going to be able to deliver the services that it, that it needs to. And that was because of the actions of the budget committee. And the reaction to that was the majority of the community, and albeit a very small majority of the community, you know, voted to get rid of the budget committee. And while I don't disagree that a budget committee can be a useful endeavor in certain circumstances, it certainly, I think, it was reflected in that vote that the community believed that the budget committee, as it was presently being operated, was, was useful. And I think that the community deserves, deserves a breather from that. You know, whether that's permanent or not is up to the community. Just as easily as we've got heard of it, people who voted back in and everybody understands that. But I think, you know, there's, there was an initiative that was put forward and it was firmly devoted. And so I think, you know, it makes sense to respect that. And on the flip side of that, I think it's going to be difficult for anyone to have any meaningful trust in any budget committee that we throw together with people that we select and we just, you know, and, and folks that really truly believe in an independent budget committee aren't going to have a whole lot of eye on if they think it's just folks like us.
Agreed.
That we've selected, hand-selected to be on the budget committee. And so I don't think it necessarily serves the end of sort of placating folks that are nervous about not having a budget. I think the best thing that this board can do is deliver a responsible, tight budget for the taxpayers and show them that, you know, the district and the board is capable of doing that. And I think that that's our, that's the way that we, that we build trust with the community by showing them that we have, that we are, you know, we're working hard to be responsible with the community's funds and we're trying to run the school in the most efficient and effective manner that we can. So I just, I don't think it's a good idea. I think that, so the voters have spoken, so to say, and, you know, I don't think it's going to achieve the objective of sort of helping planning firms that would still rather have a budget committee rather than not.
Do we take a vote?
I think we need a motion, so.
I make a motion that we appoint an advisory budget committee and some parameters for that committee.
Motion by Tammy. Second by Joe. Thanks, Joe. Any further discussion on that issue? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And abstained?
That's a stand. I'm sitting alone.
Oh, no, I said it.
Okay, you're an aye. See, my friend's.
Two ayes, five nays. The motion, the motion is.
I'm believing. I am.
I know. You're the. That's the time, Johnny.
I was just wondering when public discussion is going to become about this, because you guys are elected.
When we get to that point in the agenda, you could wait.
But you're going to vote before you hear what's public.
Absolutely.
You talk about the stat shot, and I'm going to talk anyway because I've said on this vote, yes, I know how it goes.
But then you know, John, then you know that you're not supposed to interrupt the meeting. Please.
You should have more respect for it than that.
We're, we're getting to the point where we're.
It's not.
Give you three minutes. Please wait. Thank you.
But you're going to vote before you hear.
Thank you. Please wait and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't see any students to recognize new staff.
They can't hear us. Before we know it, there, just one thing.
Yeah.
I just want to, we met, me and Brian met with Deb and Judith to go over preliminary ideas for a CIP, for the, the school CIP. Debbie's doing some investigating and then we're going to get together again and look over it again. We didn't know the big decisions, right? Maybe I just wanted to let you know that all is well.
Great. Thank you. That's a, and that, we're talking about the CIP for the facilities, big project.
Well, yeah. Well, not just the facilities, but it'd be for like, you know, textbooks and.
Computer.
Computers, yeah.
It's a sort of a more forward-looking, rather than reactionary.
Than the trust fund. Yeah, exactly.
Great, great. Appreciate the efforts in that regard. Staff, is there any report from the staff?
He did not have anything to report.
Oh, he did it? Okay.
The latest I got was, excuse me, the, the volume is coming in and out, so we don't have a way of communicating now, I think.
No, I apologize for that and hopefully next meeting we'll have it for you.
And we have several members of the community. Just remind folks, policy for comment. The total time limitation is 15 minutes. We recognize each member of the community for three minutes. So is there anybody that is interested in speaking?
Robert.
Yep. If you, if, sorry, if you don't mind, Rob, just stepping up so that.
I'm covering the chair. I have a leg issue.
You are, absolutely.
If you can, just so that the, actually, is that what we're recording with?
Yeah, it's kind of both because that one's going in and out, so that's my backup.
Okay.
Neither one.
Perfect.
Mark, I wanted to, to bring up some points about what you were talking about with the new programs that you have available. When implementing those types of programs, you have greater success if you, number one, assign a project champion, someone that is responsible for the overall implementation of the program. And these services that they're offering you, they're going to give you implementation services, they're going to, or at least these are going to be available to you. They're going to give you means of setting baselines, means of setting goals, means of doing measurement, metrics. All this stuff is there if you ask for it. Those types of programs readily have the information so that you can actually evaluate the program, see how it's working for the kid, each individual kid, that you guys were saying it was being set up for the individuals, so you can put it on a bell curve, you could see the progress that they're making. And then you can evaluate the effectiveness of the overall program for your school and your students. And that's what needs to be done with a lot of this stuff. There's just no data behind any of the things that are happening that you can go and show. I mean, at the end of the year, if you can come out and you can say, okay, we put this many kids through this new program, we spent this amount of money on it, this is what we did with it, this is our project champion, she can speak to all the aspects of it, here's the metrics we used, that's what we learned from it, these are the metrics that need to be changed, we identified other ways to do measurements that we're going to use next year and, and take those programs through their usefulness and then be able to show that it's actually accomplishing something for the school. This, setting up these types of programs and implementing the systems are the key to the success of it. And the number one key is assigning a champion for it. And it's got to be somebody within, within the school that they are the go-to person for anything that anybody has a question about. And they're the ones that are responsible for it, whether it needs to have a stipend attached to it or not, you guys figure all that kind of thing out. But to, to implement a new program and evaluate it for its, for its, you know, success for you, you know, you might even find out, God, that was a waste of. you, you know, you might even find out, God, that was a waste of money. But at least you find out. And that's without setting up these, these things and setting the baselines and the goals and the measurement metrics and the evaluations throughout it, it's just another hooked-on phonics, which isn't a bad thing, just, you know. I like hooked-on phonics. That's all I wanted to say is just in setting up programs like that. And if you need any help with it, I have a high degree of expertise in that area.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. I've got a follow-up question. Is there, is there a team leader that, or somebody that you're sort of a point person for that or is that something?
For the math program, yes. Yes, we do have that. And actually, I would be hard-pressed to say that we don't have several because they are very gung-ho about this program.
Great. Good to hear. Thank you, Ms. Mackey. I saw Mrs. Sherwood wants to hand up a second.
If you don't mind, just. My name's Paul Sherwood, and I'd like to talk about masks. And I only brought two copies because these cost me like eight bucks to make, so maybe I can go to SAU and get more next time. But we'll give you a couple of copies that I, that I got here. So I just want to talk about this study. Probably, I'm sure when you made a decision about masks, you didn't have this study in hand, okay? This is the largest study of masks done to date, period. Okay? They did this in, they did this with 340,000 people with 600 villages in Bangladesh. And this is the first randomized controlled trial study whether face masks prevent COVID-19 transmission at the community level. So at the front of this that I gave you shows NBC covering this study and I just saw there's one on NPR and there's one here on Fox and there's many news outlets who have looked at the study. It only came out six days ago, okay? So this is the biggest, most thorough study that there is out there, period dot. And since I only have three minutes, I'll try and cut to the chase as quickly as possible. Basically, it says that about 9.3 to 11.9% of COVID is reduced wearing masks, okay? And it says in there, these were only talking about surgical masks, okay, not cloth masks. Cloth masks are about half at best, about half. Majority of the school is using cloth masks, okay? So you're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of about 5%. I'm ballparking. I ask you to read this study and look at the information. I'm, although educated and whatever, but, I mean, this should be looked at and we should have multiple points of information before you make, you know, so we can make an informed decision about masks. Now, the study goes on to say that, and again, this was done between November 2020 and April 2021 with 600 villages and 340,000 people. So it definitely says, the advice in this article from the researchers was if you are going to use masks, you, you need to use surgical masks, not cloth masks. That's the recommendation. This is a study done by Stanford and Yale in cooperation with each other and the WHO, okay? So they're saying if you're going to do masks, if, I'm not in favor of masks, but if you're going to do it, they have to be surgical, not cloth. Cloth isn't cut it, okay? Now, the other thing it says in here, when you do the grouping by age, it says surgical masks, which are the better masks, aren't significantly, are not statistically significant under the age of 40, period. That is the most current scientific data that there is out there, period. There's no disputing. It doesn't say maybe, it doesn't give conditional statement. This is real data. This is the most current science and it's the most accurate that, that is there. And again, this came out six days ago and, you know, I ask you to read it and look at it. And it's the most serious study out there. They quote researchers, I hope you make copies and send it to everyone else. It has researchers quoted from, you know, Berkeley and you name the Ivy League school, they're mentioned in here.
I apologize.
Yeah.
Okay? Yeah, all right. Yeah. Thank you, people.
Does the Department of Health and Human Services recognize this stuff, you know?
Yes, the Department of Health and Human Services.
Take this into account, I guess that's a better term.
Right. I mean, I think what, what Mr. Sherwood was saying is this is recent stuff. We would expect, you know, obviously the Department of Health and Human Services is aware of large-scale epidemiology studies regarding, you know, the effectiveness of masks. And so if they choose to update their, if they, if they update their guidance, you know, our policy reflects that we were following any updated guidance. So we expect that if they feel like that the study is significant enough to adjust their guidance about whether or not we should be masking or not, that we certainly hear about that. Mr. Barnaby, I think you head up next.
Tucker Barnaby, Lincoln, New Hampshire. And you, okay, you threw me for a little bit of a loop tonight and I realized why I'm here to speak all of a sudden. I don't understand how you make a vote and then ask for people's input. What's the use of asking for their input if you've already made your decision? You're not listening. And the reason I say that is because I came up to speak about, a little bit about masks and rights and choice. It's a recommendation and you took away my choice, you took away everybody's vote, whether they wanted to vote on it or not, because you didn't listen to them until after you made your decision. All the other schools in our communities, or sorry, in our Grafton County, put out lots of surveys to the parents and asked for their input. Some of them went with masks with the parents' input, some of them went without. But, and they made sure if there was 300 people they sent out the survey to and they only got 27 back, they asked again, please, they were looking for input. And the committee thing tonight really made you look that you guys made your decision, which is fine, and then you ask, let's go to the public. You're, you're making your decision and then asking for the public's opinion. And you did that with the vote of the masks. When you talk about schools, you talk about inclusion, you talk about equity, and you talk about respect. And that's talked about from kindergarten to seventh grade to 12th grade in schools. It's on the walls. Inclusion, include people, respect people. You didn't respect the students. You didn't ask them anything. There was not a student on your committee. Those kids, those sophomores, missed half their school year, wore masks last year, and they really don't want to wear them this year. And I know I'm not wearing a mask tonight, I'm going to wear a mask in my house. And the reason I say my house is I have people over my house. And each one of those classrooms is that kid's house. Matter of fact, some of them, it's a better place to be than their houses. And at least, at least find a middle ground. That's what I'm asking tonight. That's what I came to ask. You have five, sometimes two, students in a classroom to 12. And I know, because I went to your open house last year, that you have three to five feet away from each kid in the classroom. Three feet's the new six. That's what they found out. You only need three feet. In the classroom, take the masks off the kids so they can learn and they can hear, they can talk, they can do facial expressions. And then ask this great school board, this great school administration to make them put the masks on in the hallways when they're touching each other and bumping into each other. Find that middle ground so at least in their classrooms, at least in their houses, they can talk and they can have some freedom and they can see your smiles. I'm in a classroom with kids wearing a mask, I still don't know their names because I don't know them when they get outside. It's hard to recognize people. Take them off at least in the classroom, find the ground. And please, ask for some input from everybody else. Don't vote, ask for some input. Put a survey out, especially with something this big. If you don't know it's not that big, you're not watching the news or at least your phone's not blowing up. It's really important. So I ask, please, ask for our input before you make the vote. And on that committee, I know I would not want to be on a committee that I say, hey, we want your input, but we'll make our decision afterwards. That's a waste of my time. Think about that. You made the right vote on that one. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Barnaby.
Well, Tucker has been listening to me talking about things this week. He didn't do any homework either. My name's Amy Barnaby and I have one son who is military and I have two, sixth and eighth grade. Don't put this on my time. I've seen the math books, they've come home, we've looked through them, they're awesome. We're excited about that. It's something last year, I think at the end of the year, you talked about, we need that comprehensive sixth to eighth grade that connects elementary and the Eureka Program and links up to what they're doing in high school. When my oldest was in high school, it was all online and it was like, he was printing things, it was a mess. So to have a hard book that he can, that these kids can study, that's awesome, that's a great thing. Down the road, when we're done with this mask thing, it's taking up too much of my time and your time, I'd like to talk about girls in sport. It's a huge issue right now. There's, there aren't teams for our middle schoolers to play. Lisbon today, they've canceled their girls team, they have a co-ed team. We, I mean, you know, the women in sport thing has been like years and years, we've been trying to get them engaged and it's just fallen off. I was talking to a nurse this weekend who, her daughter's at Littleton, all the eighth graders got pulled up to varsity because they didn't have players. So the trickle-down effect was, you know, now they don't have the players in it. So I would love to talk about that down the line. I had the opportunity after our last meeting, after you voted and like Tucker said, it was really kind of, I was shocked that we didn't have any input, there was no consideration. We had a survey for the strategic planning committee, but nothing regarding what parent, like just get a kind of a feel for what do parents want? What do those kids that got the vaccination when they were told in the spring, get this vaccination and you don't have to wear a mask? And they were so happy to do that. They were like, give me the vaccination.
I just want to correct, that never came from the school.
The CDC. And that was the CDC when Paul got up last year and said, you know, toward the end of the year, when he said, we've achieved that 70% threshold. Now we're at 70% plus probably an additional 10% of natural immunity that we also, it's robust, it gives you immunity to that. So we have beyond that. So what I want to talk about is how we're going about, how Vicki went about deciding, and she, DHHS and CDC guidelines and that whole matrix thing, what we're, what's going to happen to us if we abide by that and you don't take your local autonomy and the authority that you have to mask Lincoln? Not Grafton County, we're not talking about where Dartmouth is, where Plymouth is, everybody else. We're talking about Lincoln, little Lincoln. Like Tucker said, this is our home, these kids are playing together, they're out there. So I looked because I didn't understand this substantial, this red, this yellow. So here's what, these are the numbers that you get when you go on, and COVID numbers are different as far as like high, low, substantial. So the two weeks are here and what the threshold is to be substantial and to say masking full-time, universal mask inside is the 100,000 population of Grafton County, if you have 100 positive cases in a 14-day period, then you're substantial. Cases, not hospitalizations, nothing else. We're going to be in this forever. Do you underst, like, there's, there's no getting out of this because you're always going, people are going to get sick. We're testing people who are asymptomatic and don't need to be tested. So when I saw this, I was like, I get Vicki, I understand Dr. Vicki Martin, she was looking at this, she was relying on data and she needed a point to help and recommend to you what should happen. And when I looked at it, it says, it's like Chicken Little, it's like, oh my gosh, vaccinated should wear a mask, everybody should wear a mask. But when you look at the numbers for a community of like a county of 100,000, including Dartmouth, when you, I talked to them today and I said, gosh, it's weird on the Mondays. She said they don't, you know, take it over the weekend. But this 61, that's when the college kids were back and they were getting their tests over the weekend and they're from all over and if they use their dorm or use New Hampshire as their base in Grafton County, it would go into our numbers. So all these kids go and get their tests, so we have a bump. And you see that, you know, you see now we're on the downward trend. And I just would hope that instead of keeping the kids in this, talk about trauma, these children who can't see, I mean, me sitting back there, I'm like, I don't know if she's mad, is she mad saying that? Like, I, I don't really know because I can't read your face. As a teacher, I need the expressions of my kids if they're bored and they're like, you know, I need to see that, whether I need to turn my energy up or whether I need to shut up. It helps me to get feedback and the little children, kindergartners, little ones need that feedback. They need it to learn to enunciate, they need to see your mouth to be able to learn all of those things. So I would just have you look at this and consider Lincoln isn't Grafton County. We're not Pinkerton, which has a huge blow-up, but the woman said, yeah, Pinkerton, but yet they've all recovered, a high recovery rate and getting COVID, we now have therapeutics, we have vaccinated people, we know what to do. We're not in that early pandemic stage where we're intubating people and people were dying and we, we were at a loss. We've got ivermectin, we've got hydrochloroquine. So, and these are the schools that have mass choice. And I know Woodsville's still going on with it, but we have Plymouth, the largest district in the state, they've chosen to take that recommendation and take it down all the way to the parents. And when a class, if, if a kid is test positive, like they did in Newfoundland, they mask those kids in the class, they distance zone, they extra ventilation, they go outside, that kid stays home, but they take it to the smallest unit possible to allow for that freedom and choice. So I appreciate that, that you've given us time and I'll let someone else.
Thank you.
Anyone else? John?
Jay, I'd like to just apologize, I didn't mean to step on you, but I'm just frustrated with this whole thing. I was on that budget committee, we tried hard, we did what we thought we were doing, some of it wrong, some of it right. But to say that the voters spoke by seven votes when any absentee ballot voter could not vote on that subject, I think is wrong. I think you're looking at it totally wrong. I don't, I think without it, it's suicide in this community. I think we need it, I think we need checks and balances. I've sat on both of these tables, I've been on the budget committee, the school board, back to the budget committee. I know how it works, I know what you see, what you don't see, and a lot of times you're presented with a lot of numbers and a lot of facts. So that comment, to say the voters spoke is unfair and you should at least look at it. You guys now get to appoint them, you get to control them and you get to watch over. I don't understand how you can think not having one is a good idea. Who is going to be the checks and balances? Who's going to check it? Who's going to question it? Who's going to come up with it? Who's going to research it and look into it? With the load you guys already have, I would assume that would be too much to do. And I've been on both sides, I know how it works. I know what you see and what you don't see, what you need to find out, what you need to ask for and not ask for. A lot of times I don't think the right things are getting asked for and the right information's coming. But to think that that, the voters spoke, it just didn't work, the voters didn't speak. I know just in my family alone, there were enough absentee votes to tie that, and there may have been absentee votes on the other side of that. But I do not believe that is a fair statement and I think about if you looked at, and you should have, whether you guys picked it yourself, whether you guys have it, I, I don't understand how you think not having one is a good idea. Thank you.
Any further comment?
Is there anything left in the 15? Because I, I didn't do anything that I did my homework on.
I'm not actually sure.
It's important because it's relevant to how the board and operational.
Go ahead.
So I wanted to be specific about exactly what they're talking about, that the board broke their contract with the parents. There is a social contract for every layer of government and you're a local government and that social contract was broken because we didn't have any say in, well, the vote right there and then also regarding the masks. In the Board of Operations Goals, it stated that the Lincoln Woodstock Cooperative School Board exemplifies the American principle of representative democracy. If you don't know what the people you're representing want, how can you represent them? Not only that, but you also in your, in your guidelines say that any controversial, complex or complicated matters are held over or placed on agenda for discussion only prior to consideration for adoption. Maybe I'm wrong because I'm very, I don't want masks, my children have issues that they, masks inhibit their learning. So maybe to me it's complex, maybe to you it's really not a complex, it's like put them on. Nobody's saying anything, nobody's complaining because the kids want to go to school and that's what was held, that was the carrot. You want to go to school, put a mask on. And the kids understand that and that's very important. I wanted to homeschool my kids, they begged me to go to school and I, they're going to wear a mask and, but I respect them and I love them and I let them make that choice. The other one is a reminder, the school board operational goal, the school board should function in a nonpartisan, broadly representative manner. Every member of the school board should represent the entire school district and must let his or her consideration for the entire district take precedence over every form of partisanship and any special interest. So those three things I feel have been trampled on in this process from the mask issue where you had already made the decision prior to the meeting was clear. When Dr. Vicky Martin suggested to you, we should have universal masking, and someone in the meeting, I don't know who, said, how about if in the hallways, we wear masks, and when they sit at their seats, they take them off? And she said, no, universal masking. But you have the authority. So I don't know if Vicky was aware of that. She was just looking at DHHS, CDC. It said, you know, looking at the things, if this, then this. You know, like a computer program. But we're humans. We can make decisions. So I just think you, you need to be conscious and aware of that. And hopefully, more people, and I've told people, people have come up to me, and I don't know, and they've said, thank you for speaking up. The board doesn't, I said, why don't you go? The board doesn't listen. So if you, and you, you do self-evaluations. As I read through it, and that's how you evaluate how well you're doing, is you, it's like this circular, you evaluate how well you're doing. So maybe you have the ability to step outside and self-evaluate, but, you know, maybe there needs to be some outside that's, that's giving input. So that's my input, that that's what people have said. And I'm sure there are people who say, no, they're totally responsive. That's just your opinion and your experience.
Thank you. Any further public?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Yeah, come on up.
I'm in a weird position because I'm a teacher here, and I don't want to speak as part of a teacher. That's not it. But I really, I really appreciate the way the school board kept as their number one priority is keeping the kids safe. And last year, I don't know, we had some COVID cases here, but I don't remember any transmission from one kid to another. I don't know. But I don't remember that. I don't know if the masks did that, but I know that y'all did your best to keep them safe. And I really want you to keep doing that.
And I'd like to address a couple of things because I think that there's some, some misinformation out there about how the board came to the decision that we did. And so I think it bears clarification. Along with Dr. Martin on the reopening committee, there was 13 other folks. There was members of the community, there was staff members, and there was administration. And a consensus of that reopening committee, we're looking at the best available evidence that we have, which is resources, credible resources, the CDC, New Hampshire DHHS, which is our best local resource that narrows our information down to as close as we possibly can, and the American Academy of Pediatrics. And you'll find all of this information in the New Hampshire school opening toolkit. So that toolkit is the primary source of information that I think the reopening committee relied on in making that recommendation.
You didn't make a recommendation. You're requiring it. Those are two different things.
Ma'am, the reopening committee made a recommendation for the reopening plan, to change the reopening plan. Okay? That reopening plan was presented to the board. There was discussion at the board level, and ultimately, the board adopted the reopening plan as presented. That reopening plan relies on DHHS guidance, the best available information that we have as a community. Because what we don't have in the district is epidemiologists or infectious disease experts that can give us any more specific information than the information that DHHS has provided to us on a local level, both county and excluding the Upper Valley, when we, you can loop us into what is characterized as central New Hampshire. So we have the best available information that's, that we, that we can get because we don't have the money to pay an expert to come and do an individual analysis on a weekly basis for a school. So we have to rely on the information that we have. That's what the reopening committee did. They adopted those recommendations. I encourage anyone that's, that has any questions about what those recommendations are to read this, the reopening toolkit and the associated links and information that are contained in it because there's a lot of really good information that explains exactly why we're doing. And, and the board was able to, the board was, basically, our obligation was to determine whether or not to adopt the recommendations of the reopening committee. That was the purpose of that meeting. That was the purpose of the discussion that happened at that meeting, and that was the purpose of the vote that we, that we took at that meeting. So the community had an opportunity to give input at that meeting prior to any vote that was made. And there was a, a large group of people that evaluated the best available evidence that we have and the best available resources that we have to us to make the recommendation. So it was a multi-step process.
So the number one stakeholder and tax payer is the people, are the, the parents. So you said it was a consensus of teachers and administrators.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that. I didn't say that. I said it was a consensus of the reopening committee.
Right, which was administrative, it didn't include, well, if they were wearing their parent hat, but they weren't. So it cut out students and parents. And I'm telling you, I called or I read through every single reopening plan in the type in all of Grafton County. Every single one of them, with the exception of Linwood, had surveyed, had Zoom meetings over the summer, involved parents, profiled head parents on the reopening committee. That was, that was taking place throughout the summer. They were involved in the process. I mean, we can do what Woodsville did, and we can get 200 signatures, and we can have a special meeting. I thought when Kristi Morris came up and said at the end of that, which was a wonderful point, she said, we, and she put herself on the line as well as a teacher, and she said, let's do a survey and find out what the parents think. And Judy told me tonight, we would be, that you told her, we're not gonna send out a survey. Send me what you want to send. We're gonna look at it. And clearly, you've nixed it because I thought we were gonna be talking about that tonight, that let's hear what the parents have to say. But you're clearly not. Or are you?
That's right. No. And there's a lot of decisions that happen at this board and at the school level that aren't put to the parents. We don't call the parents or put a survey out when we design the science curriculum. We don't just put a survey out.
But this is my kids' health, and this is my kids' education, and you have taken away, this is a medical procedure, and you're saying.
If you don't, if you're not interested in the explanation.
I don't have a say in that. That is what you're saying to me.
Thank you. I'll, I'll accept the motion to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, Tammy.
I, I have a question. What do you want, Joe?
I just wanted to clarify on my vote. When I voted against the mask, I voted against the mask because I kind of believe that when the kids get to their desk, they should be allowed to take their masks off. I do agree with that. I am for masks everywhere else. But like the restaurants, when you sit down to eat, you get to take your mask off, you're socially distanced. These kids are roaming around outside together and doing everything. I voted against it because I thought that we should be able to sit at their desks, not move, and not have their masks. That way, they could view their teachers, the teachers could view them. They would get a much better education. I firmly believe when they get up from that desk, that they should have masks on. I just wanted to clarify my vote. I am not against masks.
But at that time, that's when, when they say in further discussion, that those discussions come up. They don't come up two, a week and a half later.
No, I am giving an explanation of why I gave my vote. That's all.
There's a motion on the table to adjourn the, thank you, Joe. Call those in, do you think they're saying aye?
That's just a public, right?
Yeah, the public. We have a, do we have, do we need a non-public?
No, we do.
I guess we'll pull the board to go into non-public at this point then.
What is it, what is it, our, I need one A what?
I'll say 91A3.
Great. Go ahead, Danielle.
Are we winning?
It's new, maybe. You're getting the poll vote?
We get 91A3.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Um, yes, right?
Yeah.
Kevin? Asha?
This is a little bit of a non-public.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. The meeting is.
Judy, is it gonna be a vote every time when we come out?
No.
No. So just to clarify, there's no survey, no info from yours? Judy, is that correct? There's no survey?
Comparing, there is not going to be a survey.